I don't feel that we have a choice is my, and again, I'm advocating for what my belief is. And my reaction coming in, I wasn't here for those other experiences with what was proposed and the scale and those other things I'm learning rapidly. I'm just, I was upset by what I saw.
With the thirty-two thousand for the gentleman that is doing it, again, there's no, I understand that you, it's easier to work with the person that has been there, but again, as times have changed, is it worth looking to see if anybody else could come in for a second view from the one that was made at a cheaper cost? Is there any other organizations?
More economical. It's not cheap, it's economic.
Economic, excuse me.
Yeah, and we also own, the information that is in our possessions is our, is proprietary to us. It's just that it was created by the, by the individual and the company that, I don't think the company exists anymore. I think it was purchased by a new one. But it doesn't hurt to ask the question of one or two, and it does, I believe we have a policy in which if this were not allocated prior to, we would have to have a multiple because of this large F.
We would be going to where you're at with this.
Yeah, the board doesn't.
Right. I think it's a responsible question and it's good to get it out there. Again, I'm looking at it new as if it was okay to have them as an, as an employee partner a year ago. Is it that different from now? And if the best thing to do is to start all over, but it's not like that we didn't just have some consulting work from Dunn, from Dunn and Dunn a year ago. So I was sort of treading on, that had already been vetted by the fireboard, so I think it's a good question to throw out there. But I was thinking, well, there must've been quite a bit of preamble to get to having them be somebody we're going to potentially lock forty-five grand to, then I'm just thinking maybe before, so if that was naive on my part, certainly we'll.
So I might have missed that, this study was done a year ago and this isn't the one seven?
No, 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 years ago.
Just, just to fill in the gaps here, oh-six and oh-seven, oh-six or oh-seven, or maybe oh-three, we went before the voters, this individual that's working, who was working for that company, that company is acquired by this company. There's, there's some continuity there, so we hit, it's not that we need to hit the ground running, it's just the relationship has been built.
And we used him last year as consultation when we started looking into this. And do I understand correctly that this needs to be done by June of this year or that money goes back to the general fund?
We don't have the funds on spend at that point, and then we have to act.
June first, June fifteenth?
June third. There might not be necessarily enough time to get another approval at this point.
So, but if they go back to the general fund, it's just something we would include for the budgets next, next year though.
Yeah, you'd have to determine how you want to look at that.
So it's not like, you know, it doesn't expire, the money doesn't go in the trash?
No, I know, I just, I'm not saying it in another year.
You're trying to down the road. Two next month, well, potentially actually two next July for us.
Brian, do you want to add?
My feeling is that if we can move the process along now, I think we should, if we keep trying to find another cheaper quote, finding ways to, we've used this individual before, were we happy with this product before? Were we?
I was not on the board back then, I don't think you were either, but I think we were.
Wasn't, wasn't, I don't think, from the individual why it failed, was that?
Yeah. Well, whereas it's a money item, someone's going to need to remove, pass the discussion phase into an action phase, someone's going to need to make a motion, or we don't make a motion, we just move on to the next item on the agenda, so let's take another picture.
I'll make a motion to, we complete the work that was started by using the fund set aside to, to obtain a safety-focused guidance on what our district should be doing with the elementary school from, I forgot his name. Harriman.
Safety code, safety and code.
Safety and code.
Yep.
Specific focus.
Yep.
For that, that's it. That's the scope of it, so that we have guidance on where we stand and what we have to do.
Are you doing up to a certain degree for that?
Up whatever, I'm not sure what's in there, so just use whatever's.
With money set aside.
The money set aside.
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed.
Motion made by Jesse. Is there a second Jesse's motion?
Second.
Brian Garland, second's Jesse's motion. Any further discussion on this? We've had quite a bit of discussion already. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Moving forward to our next item on the agenda, that's can be updated by the Policy Committee. April and myself are both on that committee, so April, I'll ask you to start it off, please.
Yeah, so we went over the policy readings. We have a couple of first readings and a second reading to review today. I don't have a copy of them in front of me, but I can.
There you go.
Thank you. Do you want to talk a little bit about them, or?
Well, we've had first read, we're going to do first readings on.
Maybe just a general overview then?
Yeah, just give a general overview of where we're at and what we've got.
Basically, we wanted to make sure we set a policy in place for the board seat, that was one of the things we'll go through a first reading today, just so there's no uncertainty in the future. It'll be very clear if there's a vacancy, what we'll do. Review the emergency care and the first aid, and sort of just, not a lot of big news from this meeting, just some reviews in this new one piece.
Do you want to read this policy?
I can do it, you want to do that for the unexpired board seat?
Please.
Okay, so if we have to fill an unexpired board seat, the board will fill the unexpired board seat by using the following processes. The board will use the process of interviewing interested candidates for filing the unexpired board seat.
Fill in.
Can I say fill in? Did I say filing? I'm not well today, so blame on that. The board must determine the timeline it will use to fill an unexpired seat, or given the time remaining before the next town election, consider leaving the seat open until that election. So if it's ten days after or ten days before.
So that's our first reading. What, what will happen is we'll have a second reading, then it'll become policy. We also have a second reading of admission of. Oh, sorry. Second page, so April, I'll let you continue along.
Summarize or read the whole thing?
I was on my.
It's what's underlined there.
Yeah, so, so we're just doing an upgrade to the emergency care and first aid to authorize the district to obtain, store, and administer the Narcan and anything else they need opiate antagonists for emergency use in the schools. So in this policy, we'll make sure that the school nurse or other people are properly trained, and the superintendent is also authorized to procure the medication, and that's basically it, just making sure that we're proactive in being prepared for what may case in today's world. So, way to put it?
And for second reading, we have J E C B admission of tuitioned non-resident students. And. With that, Russ, I'm going to let you explain what minor changes we made to this.
We just went back and given the fact that we have been accepting, picking a lot more tuition students, and we also have our policy talks about faculty members' children tuitioning in here as well, we wanted to make sure our language was consistent regarding IEP, so special education services, and the payment method, and what it is that we're responsible for and would not be responsible for, and this just clearly outlines all those processes for any tuition student that we would take moving forward.
Just as clarifying of what we paid for and what we done.
Yes, and what we're charging.
Yes.
And who we're charging.
Yeah, without getting into the details, it makes, it sets the rules for the play.
Great.
I don't think any motion on either of these.
Are you in the second meeting?
Any motion for the second reading?
You're sure to take, you don't have to, you may want to take a motion in the first reading, so I want to see, you can say you.
Okay.
I will motion to accept both first readings and the second reading. Do you want me to?
Motion made by April, we have a second.
Brian seconded.
All right, so Brian seconded that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to action items. Let's see. We have action items, proposed two thousand seventeen eighteen student athletic handbooks. I believe in the package you guys have, the updated package, or if you're, what's on it?
Two hundred and thirty-two.
Thirty-eight pages, thirty-eight or thirty-two?
Mine says two hundred and thirty-two.
You're correct. Russ, could you tell us if there's been any significant changes since my tenure on this?
So the last two years, both Jody and Sean did a really big overhaul to both, both handbooks and Tom Fredrick did an overhaul to the athletic handbook. Mine is standing at the speak with the administration, but if there are changes, there are very minor details, there is updating personnel, you know, phone numbers and email addresses. If you want to correct me if I'm wrong on that.
I had one very small, but I think it's worth mentioning. We talked about it with our faculty and our students a little bit, but we have three minute passing time between all our periods, with the exception of advisory, we have two minutes before advisory and two minutes after advisory. Lo and behold, our students make it to time to class on time, except for advisory in their third period class, so what we found is the two minutes just isn't enough. So one thing we're kind of banding about a little bit is just adding one minute to those two passing times, which would then cause us to extend the school day by two minutes to two hundred and seven. Thank you. Yeah, last year or the year before, this came before policy.
We'd be fine with it.
Yeah. So any further discussion on this?
Just one question, it seems every year I ask the same question. So to participate in athletic and extracurricular activities, the child has to be in good standing. My understanding that's one failure, is that correct?
Yes.
I think you and I've had this discussion in the past, that there's some benefits to having that individual still participate, but I struggle with, if you have, if you're not making the grade, why are you participating in things outside of academics?
Yeah, great question. So there's really three components. So first of all, there's an NHIA rule, which you have to be passing through classes. So if you're not in that situation, you're ineligible.
Yep.
By the school, by the NHIA. If you, if you're NHIA eligible, but you have failed more than one class or something, we will put you on a probationary status, which means that you'll have to work with the athletic director, you'll have to put a plan together, there'll be a portion of the season which you would be ineligible for, but then you would be able to get that eligibility back. And one of the rationales for that is, I'll just use a student that failed two classes and they wanted to play basketball, and now they have no hope now of playing basketball, and so they're not coming after school, that, you know, they haven't really made any progress, where by putting that plan together, we can have a study hall three days a week or four days a week, we can put something in place to get them back on a positive track. The reason we don't have it being one F, quite frankly, and, you know, there's different feelings on that, but what, you know, some of the things that we see sometimes with that is that students might avoid taking a tough class. So the student might not take advanced placement history, because they're worried about taking that class and then failing that class and then being ineligible for that class, or instead of taking physics, they might take something else. So they're very valid concerns, and we've had a lot of talk about it, and, you know, we certainly want the academics to be at the forefront, and frankly, if they're not, they're sometimes will take action in the lines of, maybe you don't leave school early that day when it's a baseball game, because you're behind on classes. So we do it more that way. Our worry is, once they're not involved with the program at all, we really don't see a situation where, oh, now, now I'm getting to B's, B's, we generally see them to go even further down the track, which we'd rather not have them in.
But if a student is having one failure, do we do the same amount of work for the academic support that individualized the athletic director?
We don't put them on a probationary status, no.
Can we? Should we?
You could.
I'm just. Because I truly understand the fear of losing them if you, if you don't let them participate socially, emotionally, there's all kinds of things that would not be good.
We can certainly put that to the athletic committee, the leadership committee, and it's something they can, they can talk about and having a, a scale there. And one of the nice things that we are small enough that we do have meetings with kids sometimes, you know, prior to that of, you're three weeks away, things aren't going so well, and the coaches are great, you're not going to be going to practice this week until you've met with your, your physical science teacher and made up your homework. So those steps are, why don't I bring that to the athletic director, he can bring it to the athletic leadership, and we can bring something back from it.
Okay, and just reading through the manual, just, that was the one that seems to hit me every time I see it, that one failure and we still participate, which I understand the inclusion, but I think we're losing the focus that we should be doing everything we can.
Sorry, making, no, I'm just going to make sure, like, making sure that regardless if it's one F or two F.
Well, if it's two, if it's two Fs, you're on an academic.
But even if you got one F, you want sort of that academic attention.
Yes.
Right? More, more formalized.
Yes.
Any further discussion on this?
Sorry, I know that didn't really come in the handbook, but thank you.
I agree though.
Do, do we want to table this until next, next meeting, or are we just going to move forward? I would suggest we move forward.
I don't think it changes the text in the handbook, it just changes what we do when we get to that one position, I hope.
Yeah, I will bring something forward that we can amend afterward.
Okay.
If that's good.
Formalized process we want.
Yes. Yeah.
So you want a motion?
No motion.
I'll motion to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen student athletic handbook.
Jesse?
Sure.
Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Moving forward to proposed two thousand seventeen eighteen coaches list, that's for next year?
So a couple of things we try to do, some of our coaches are involved in the summertime, we actually want to get them hired so they can go work with our teams, and if we know coaches are coming back, we don't put them in front of you, now we get them on here.
We don't pay them in the summer, do you?
No. What they do as a coach.
Yeah, that's my thought. Okay, any discussion on our list of coaches for why we're doing this now? Hearing none?
Motion to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen coaches that are proposed.
Motion made by Jesse, seconded by Ed.
So the summer programs, those open to any students in Sunapee or any?
If I remember correctly, the.
Anybody anywhere.
Sunapee kids, there's a middle school soccer program, the boys' soccer program, baseball, and then the girls' middle school and basketball. So any students within our school with, you know, six to 12th grade.
Okay.
So it's, you don't have to be on the TV, you can say, hey, I'm interested in that out.
Visiting.
Give it a try.
Visiting kids from Massachusetts are up for the summer, are they able to participate in these?
That's a good question, I don't.
Yes.
I have, we have had, just to get numbers.
Okay.
And that's great too, just because you get new people and.
In many ways, it's not the school.
Okay, because it's an outside of the school function.
To give you an example, I'll use baseball as an example, that's paper. So Tom Fredrick coaches it, but it's, but it's paper.
Let me see again.
Okay, good, so we have, we have a motion, or any further discussion on this?
Just one second.
There is summer varsity girl soccer as well, and I was just pointing out that it was.
I'm sorry.
Won't be for her, but.
Well, if you're hiring.
Are you coming back? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
If you're hiring Mr. Cooney, you are hiring him.
Doesn't matter what.
Okay, good, thank you for pointing that out. I'll call for a vote, now all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Next will be a proposed two thousand seventeen eighteen breakfast lunch prices. Russ, can you tell us where the lunch prices are?
Sure, currently our breakfast is at one sixty, we're recommending to go to one sixty-five, lunch is at two seventy-five, recommend to go to two eighty-five. Really, this has to do with the federal government and making sure that we're not subsidizing our lunch program with the free and reduced lunch price, which is right around a little over three dollars right now, and so they would like our prices to be closer to three dollars, so that when we're getting a free or reduced lunch, we're not making twenty cents on every free or reduced lunch.
Explain to us, I have a motion to.
Motion to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen school breakfast lunch price proposal, motion made by Jesse, seconded by Brian, I see his hand in the air. Any further discussion?
Just my one question, you know, it's still a pretty economical price, is there any benefit for us to upping it further to give better options?
So we're, better options as far as choices?
Choices or, you know, away from spicy chicken nuggets all the time.
Yeah, I think we're just, it's trying to find what's a different point, so it's still an important option. I still think, again, we're subsidized, a lot of our meals is continued to be subsidized by the federal government, you talked, Bob talked about buying it a year in advance. I don't necessarily go on to three dollars, I don't want to price people out either.
Yep.
Because I know every year that we do work, we do lose people that have attendance events, like, yeah, I'm not going to two seventy-five, I'm not going to two eighty-five, and we have people that move on to go. So we're trying to balance that.
Okay.
I don't think it necessarily, adding a quarter or more doesn't mean we're getting the same.
That, that one year that he tried out, like, the roasted chicken, I really liked that one, that's great, yeah. And then the, the increase that you're recommending, the ten cents, is that an actual cost increase that we're seeing, or really just to be more?
Just be more competitive with the, get better for that three, a little over three dollar mark, it's okay, federal government on the reverse.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on our list of action items is the proposed school psychologist nomination, and I will defer to Russ to explain this one to us, please.
So, Dori, Dori Shaw's been here for a long, long time, she's retiring and graduated her.
Thirteen years.
How many?
Thirteen years.
Appreciate her work, wish her well, and just filling the position. Tara, do you want to explain a little more about the, your interview process?
I'd be happy to. We had eleven applicants, there was a committee of seven, spanning elementary, middle, and high school representation. We opted to interview seven of the applicants, and they, we had a huge variety, we had very experienced, we had completely inexperienced, and everywhere in between. Out of those interview of seven, we selected three finalists who came to meet with Russ and myself, and then due. From the committee of seven, there was, there was a top choice unanimously, and, and two additional because we wanted to be proactive and make sure we had enough, that we had options, excuse me. We selected Ada Murray, she's coming to us from Pennsylvania, she has a doctorate in school psychology, she's very student-friendly, her references were outstanding, we're really fortunate to have her, I'm excited about going into next year with her. Oh, and she is a New Hampshire native, so she's, she's moving back to her, towards her family, so I think it's something we can get on as well.
How many years experience does she have?
She is.
Let me state it. Where, where do we place her on the?
She's not a.
She's not.
Oh, not, oh, oh, I'm sorry, my mistake. All right. I'll ask a question differently, are we same as, less than, or more than, or former?
Less than.
And just a question, are you, you know, I know most of her experience was not in the school setting, except for last year, are you comfortable that it's a better fit for her, that she'll do well in this sort of setting?
She's been the last two years in a school setting, and prior to that, she did internships in the school setting, and I'm extremely confident, but one of her references was a director of student services, and they had a very difficult case, and she was able to use some very specific information about how Ada was sort of the key person in helping that situation resolve, but I'm very confident, and I think the team, to me and Jody were part of that, was very happy with her.
And by having this person in place, we're saving the potential for expenses of needing to outsource those services.
Yeah, so evaluations are running twenty-four hundred dollars for students, if you're on the lower end.
Does the board have any more questions for Taylor? Are you going to make a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the candidate as presented.
Motion by Brian Garland, seconded by Jesse. Any, any further discussion from the board? I'll call for all those in favor, if you can say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Next on the list is proposed SCVS nurse nomination, and again, I will pick it over to Russ to talk about this.
Sure, we have a candidate, I'll let Jody talk about the process in a minute. The nurse is on the teacher contract, she's coming in at step, bachelor's degree, step twelve, but the nurse addition in the contract is only paid at ninety percent of the combat rate, so it's, even though it's a full-time job, it's only paid at ninety percent, and that's how it's written within the contract itself. Jody, you want to talk about process?
So we had four, four applicants originally, one withdrew. We interviewed two, and we had a committee of five people. One of our biggest concerns was our current nurse, Helen Voplin, has very strong connections in the community, and helps communities in a lot of ways, so we wanted to make sure that we were hiring someone who would be able to make those connections as well. We did not have, we did not have a community member as who had applied. So we, the two we interviewed, we would have been very pleased with either one, the person that we chose has, it does have some school nursing experience, not as a school nurse, but as a one-to-one aide-first student, but has been in the school health office when that student has been out, or does know what the job entails, but we're, we're very pleased that we have this.
So board have any questions? Jody or for Russ?
Just a quick, so four is obviously substantially lower than what we typically bet, is it because of the nursing, the school nurse profession is just, is that what you expected, I guess?
Yes, people who are in school nursing don't leave school nursing jobs. And so unless there's a retirement, you know, they're, they're not moving around like you would see more of maybe with a teacher or something, they, they don't leave those jobs. So it's hard to get people who have a lot of experience because they're staying in this sort of position. So, no, that's, that's pretty much what we expect.
From a financial standpoint, I guess it's only a common area hospital, so it's finding the right person has the right experience.
How long in Melbourne with us? I know she treated my, she treated my kids, but that's not that long ago.
Yeah, it's, it's more, please, it's more than twenty-five.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure if it's twenty-seven, twenty-eight, somewhere in there.
Do we do anything to recognize?
So we do, we do everything at the beginning of the year, we recognize people in the years of service, as you get to thirty, you get an individual pin, and you deserve more than that, but you get an individual pin here as a service, and we do every five. And at the end of the year, we will recognize them, how do you get them, we get to our retirees. She was recognized, I think you also saw in the annual report, because we have a summary from the annual report, and it's also the other retirees.
Need a motion to?
Make a motion, we accept the candidate as presented.
Motion by Brian Garland, seconded by Ed. And we've had plenty of discussion, do you need any more? No. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on our, on our action items is the SAU certified personnel. And Russ, I will, for us, if anyone's hiring.
Just real simply of two certified folks in the SAU Kelly, as our business administrator, and I was our director of student services, and I'm recommending them for nomination for the shit.
And.
No, that's different.
That's different, okay, sorry. Okay, any questions from the board for Russ on, on this? Hearing none, how about a motion to? Hearing none, how about a motion to?
I want a motion to approve the proposed S A U certified personnel.
A motion by April, seconded by Jesse. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions, motion carries unanimously. And last on our action item list is the proposed spending from school facility capital reserve fund for S N H S back parking area. Handout is coming down to you guys.
If you tear them apart and put them side by side, that's how they figure suspension.
Let's, I'll take a motion first, and then we can get into the discussion. So, if we don't have a motion, then obviously it fails. Yes?
So, I left it on here as it was presented at our last meeting. The C I P, when it met, and speaking with Matt and myself, had some other recommendations. But I've also, I think, I spoke to you today, Brian, regarding not only this paving bid, but looking at the erosion issue that we talked about initially fixing, or addressing with some of our reserve fund money. Potentially is going to be expensive, more expensive, because we're talking about ripping out the guard rail, replacing up some sort of retaining wall. There's a drainage pipe in there, and to do that, and the paving at the same time, obviously, which chicken and egg, and you're not going to pave before you fix that. But I'm not sure if the committee wanted to take on that whole challenge right now.
You're talking, sorry, you're talking the side, aligning the field.
Looking at the ball field, so the guard rail that goes down.
And in particular, when we did the tour, we looked at the back, so I'm not sure.
So there's almost three different pieces going on, right? There's a full paving, there's the fixing the erosion of the ball field by the guard rail, and then the piece, the other piece we worked on was the back parking lot, fixing the erosion, and we could fix that erosion and pave that as well.
So, for those who weren't with us, I don't need a motion to keep discussing, but what we, when we went through, the initial motion at the last meeting was to pave the back parking lot, and we said we were going to look at that as the subcommittee, our responsibility. When we went to go correct or add, but when we were looking and getting, getting a tour of it, our question was, you know, is that something that we would want to use funds for? Let's go take a look at it and get a sense of the severity of it. So we walked around. Our question was, this is beyond our scope of expertise, but it appeared that if we were considering, is there some potential erosion issues that were brought up on that? So that's what we left that, you know, exchange with. We went to look at the paving, and we ended up talking about, you know, recognizing the risk of erosion or other factors.
And this was along the back of the building, parallel to the stream. So the erosion was a concern there, because the asphalt ends, and there's a gravel apron. It's going to push down the slope towards the creek.
So we left it as, you know, beyond our expertise, what would somebody recommend to address it? And that's got us to this point. So what we, what we saw, and what's on the agenda doesn't quite align, because it was there from the last agenda was carried forward, but I just wanted to give a little context to the rest of the board and the public for how we got from that to what we were asking about, if that helps people.
Very much. So is it, is it a recommendation of the committee that you, we, us, find somebody with more expertise to discuss what the issues are there before we address spending any dollars on, on pavements?
I don't know, I think Matt has a pretty good handle on.
So you discussed fixing the erosion.
Yes.
Instead of doing the paving.
Correct.
Which we can do, you said potentially taking money out of the capital reserve to fix erosion issues.
Yep.
I gave you the paving bids, because this was information active, because the paving bids came in so low.
Right.
So the paving bids were already put, said, we go 32,000, 34,000. Paving that whole back, again, from the corner of the high school all the way back, which was supposed to be 32,000, came in at $20,000. So the price of paving, for whatever reason, this year was extremely low.
Price of oil?
Price of petroleum, this year, right? So, given that, do you want to do the erosion in just the paving? Do you just want to do the erosion? So I, I guess I'm presenting with some new information that's looking for, we want to go as a committee to recommend to the board.
With, as a new member, understanding that the paving was presented to the community and not supported, I was, you know, concerned about using the capital reserve fund for paving. Again, just from the observer's standpoint, taking the feedback and the information I've had, it made sense, it would make more sense to me if we were to do something just to make sure that the erosion, I don't want to say we wait on the paving and have it be $60,000 in the future, but my sense from, to the extent I can have an opinion or any kind of a viewpoint, it just seemed to make sense to fix the larger ecosystem. And if the pavement needs to wait a little while, or we bring it back to the public to consider, okay, you know, potentially, I was thinking, if we were able to, you know, fiscally responsibly fix the erosion, that we make, it's a long-term investment, then we could potentially go back to the voters and say, we've done this work, this is why we want to do the paving, and then go back. So, I'm not giving you a, I'm hoping that's a clear enough answer, but that's what, that's, that was my opinion when I left, so I don't want to.
No, you're right. That was.
I'm not just giving you all the pieces of, based upon the changes.
So what I'm hearing out of the three of you guys talk is, you want to table the paving. You need to want to talk about determining costs to, to fix whatever erosion may be occurring, and then you would discuss that at later in the time.
I, that's, I think is the most responsible thing to do, is just if there's another issue, just don't pave over it.
Well, just looking at.
I was hoping to get that in.
You're on tape, too.
I just want to add a piece in again, from my knowledge.